Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District. And I don't see Councilwoman Glover, or I see Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District. All right, and I don't see any other council members on the line. From the Office of the President, I know Nikki Thompson's on the line. Matt Steckman, are you on? And Erin DeGratton-Wright? All right, and representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mihue on the line? And Nina Themelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right, this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0094, Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Establishment, the Hometown Heroes Act, for the purpose of providing for the establishment and implementation of a public safety apprenticeship program for Baltimore City, providing for the development and oversight of the program by the Baltimore City Fire Department in partnership with certain other public safety agencies in Baltimore City, establishing the purposes of the program and requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department report annually certain information to the Marion City Council and requiring a report to be made available on the department's website. This bill was introduced on June 8th, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
My colleagues.
You were muted for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that. So I, I'm trying to get my notes together, one second. Okay, here we go. All right, so we've heard this one a few times. And to remind colleagues, this bill, okay, here we go. All right, I'm ready. Sorry, I'm trying to find everything I need to talk about it because we have a lot of amendments. I wanted to be able to walk through them effectively.
Okay, take a moment if you need it.
I know, we're good, we're good. I got everything I need in front of me. Okay, so it's a reminder, this bill establishes a public safety apprenticeship program that would operate out of the Baltimore City Fire Department, Baltimore City Police Department, and OEM in partnership with Baltimore City Schools. It would create a pipeline, a formally established pipeline, workforce development pipeline into these amazing public safety careers, so that all of these departments are reflective of the city of Baltimore, so that we're creating legitimate opportunities for our young people, of which this council has many times vocalized the need for more workforce training programs and pathways for young people into well-paying careers. And I firmly believe that careers in public safety are a path that we should be pushing our young people towards. Today, I thought it would just be helpful for us to walk through and consider amendments, of which the committee should have all of them. All 21. And these amendments are a reflection of conversations that have been had, both in the committee hearing process and in conversations with Baltimore Fire, the Mayor's Office, Police Department, Law Department, and City Schools. And so if you'd like, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to just go through them. Most of them are very technical. Some of them are a little bit more nuanced.
Yes, let's do that.
I guess if Sam could pull it up, so. All right. All right, so first, page 1, line 7. That is a technical amendment that would extend out the effective date, or provide for the effective date in the in the, for the bill, sorry, again, 21 bills, I'm trying to figure where I'm at. Yes, it provides the effective date for that, again, very technical. A lot of the, page 2, striking line 5 in the bill, again, a technical request that came in from the Law Department related to a residency requirement that was listed in the bill, which the Law Department has stood up many times that we can't have those type of provisions in the bill, in our efforts. So that was a reflection of their commentary in their bill report. And I don't know, I saw Elena pop up, I don't know if you, is this good in reflecting what you guys were concerned about, at least for that provision?
Elena, you're muted.
Or we can come back, she's having some technical problems.
I think we just move on.
Okay, yeah, if there's any issues, but that was from the Law Department. Number, amendment number 3 is reflective of the conversation we've had with the Fire Department around staffing the program. And so it removes out a minimum requirement, or stated minimum requirement of personnel to be assigned, uniform and non-uniform personnel to be assigned. And in, basically gives a little bit more flexibility from a very specific allocation of staff to something that is, would be reasonable to accommodate the need of the program. Page 4. 2 through 4, okay. Again, Public Safety, so this one, number, or number 3 strikes, I'm sorry, number 4 on page 4, line 2 through 4, replaces and adds a little bit more clarity on the needs of each agency, sorry, I'm trying to turn my, turn that sound off. Each agency to develop and implement their sort of own elements of the program and takes out the very specific language that would have, was sort of being interpreted as placing the Fire Department as the agency entirely in charge of the program, where it's supposed to be more of a partnership model. And so we took that feedback and included it. Page 4, striking line 21, again, this was from the Fire Department, there were languages, language in there around minimum grades and stuff like that, where we, again, trying to increase the level of flexibility for young people in the program. Okay, page 4, lines 24 through 25. Okay, yeah, yours looks a little different than mine, so I'm gonna stop looking at the screen. Throw me off a little bit, which is, it's totally fine. So, could I have more of the sort of broader language in mind in front of me? So that's why I'm a little bit thrown off. There was also a provision in here that was pulled from another bill and slipped through the cracks when we talked about eligibility for the program. There was another program that this was modeled off of, that had a citizenship requirement. Obviously, we're not in favor of that, did not catch it in the bill draft, so this is removing that requirement out. We want to make sure that we are keeping this program open to all Baltimoreans, regardless of their immigration status or where they came from. That is not reflective of what we stand for in the city, and it was an oversight in the drafting of the bill. And so pulling that out, so that we make sure that this is as inclusive as possible. Amendment number 5, okay, yeah, amendment number 5. Yeah, so number 5, subs is again from the Fire Department, and strikes the the amount, the attendance requirement in the program, particularly with everything that's been happening with the pandemic. Having a minimum number of days in the program may be a challenge for some young people. And so the Fire Department recommended that they make their own sort of determination of qualifying participation. So again, just giving more flexibility to folks in the program, young people in the program. Again, also removing the residency requirements and approval from a parent or guardian is, again, we want to, young people come from different circumstances, so trying to make sure that we are being, again, as inclusive as possible. Amendment number 6. All right, again, page 6, lines 11 through 14, came from Law Department, again, removing out the listed residency requirements there. There were also provisions being removed on this page, giving, again, returning that flexibility to each agency in the development and implementation of their elements of the program, the modules included in that. The basic 19 to 20. Thank you, Sam. Okay. Okay, all right, so, sorry, again, amendment number 6, again, substitutes takes out the number of years that they have to be enrolled in a particular school. It also removes some of the required hiring provisions and returns, again, a lot of that flexibility back to the agency, though there are, we did leave in minimum hiring requirements for this, which would be outlined on page 7. The amendment number 7 strikes out mandated benefit packages and returns that requirement back to the Board of Estimates. And I believe that one would have come from the Law Department in all likelihood. I don't have that one in my notes, it's from where it originated, but that would have been either from HR or Law Department on that one. Sorry, one second now, trying to make sure, yeah, sorry, and seven strikes out a lot of, again, the minimum benefits and returns all of that back to HR and the BOE. Okay. Similarly, amendment number 8 corrects minimum participation recommendations in the program. Sorry, some of these are duplicated or throw me off, but are just listed in different parts of the bill. And amendment number 9 gives the enactment date of January 1, 2023. I'm sorry I stumbled through that. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll open the floor to questions if folks have any for, for Councilman Burnett. All right, seeing no questions, we can we can move forward, as I understand, Councilman Burnett, we're not going to vote on the amendments or the bill today. There's one holdup that we still need to work out with the agencies, and maybe we can talk a little bit about that when we go through the agency reports. So now we'll hear from the agencies, starting first with the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members, Kim Washington, yeah, the Fire Department. We stand by our original report, we are happy to see some of our recommendations are a part of Councilman Burnett's recommended amendments to this bill. We are available for any questions, we still have an issue with the number of cadets that we have to, that are sort of mandated as a shall, and, or must in the, in the bill, that we would like to make that a may instead. And I think it's 25 for us, 25 for the Police Department, so we would like to see a little bit more flexibility in that. And with the changes, you know, we feel like we can move forward. I would like Chief Shiloh to make an announcement, if she is on here, Chief Shiloh.
Good afternoon, everybody. I don't know if I've done it in this forum, but we were officially approved by the State Department of Labor as an agency that was approved for the Maryland Apprenticeship Program. So we are starting to move forward with that, put that together, and hopefully we can roll that first cohort out this summer.
And so with that announcement, you know, we feel positive moving forward that we will be able to touch more Baltimore City students through this program. So that, that's the extent of my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kim. I'm curious, how does that fit into this program, should it come into play? What does that mean?
The Maryland Apprenticeship Program is a paid apprenticeship, it's 450 hours, and it would start in the summer after 10th grade. It's kind of like a longer youth works, where youth works is only five weeks, this would be the entire summer for both their 10th grade and 11th grade, it has to be completed before they graduate high school. So it would familiarize them with our department, all areas of our department, not just fire or EMS, there's the Fire Marshals, all of our different divisions of our department. And then after their 11th grade, we would teach them emergency medical responder, CPR, and in hopes of bringing them in as community aides once they graduate.
That's great, congratulations. We'll actually move through all of the committee reports from the agencies and then open up the floor to questions. Should council members have questions about feedback, especially with regards to the community's responses to the amendments? Next, we are going to move on to the Police Department.
Good morning, actually it's afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For the record, Michelle Wirtzberger, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. We're in a similar boat, and we share similar concerns with the Fire Department. First of all, we stand by our report, we are very grateful that the, that the Councilman Burnett has agreed to adopt or push forward some of these amendments. The one amendment that we think still needs to be considered is adjusting the mandated number of cadets that need to be hired by each agency. And from the police's perspective, you all saw our announcement regarding the release of the GTTF report. One, the very, very first recommendation in that report addresses hiring standards and mentions how the urgency to hire more police officers may have led to the reduction of of hiring standards, or, you know, looking the other way. And we are very concerned that codifying a, a number in law could cause future administrations to, to reduce their hiring standards. We, this administration, Commissioner Harrison's administration, has safeguards in place. We don't think that would necessarily impact us, but we are very determined to make sure that we have things in place to make sure that there's no GTTF or similar situations in the future. We do have some proposed language that we'd be happy to share with the sponsor or the committee to help move along those, that information, or that, that process. I can also point the committee and the sponsor to the page in the report that mentions that particular hiring information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, we've got the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Elena DePietro, from the City Law Department. Sorry about my technical issues there, I couldn't get the mute button off before. But the residency, the big problem that the Law Department had with this bill with the residency requirements, because state law does prohibit local jurisdictions from having residency requirements for certain categories of employees, and these, these positions would fall into, into those categories. And secondly, we had an issue with the, and the original bill had a lot of HR-related requirements, like setting salaries and benefits and all that sort of thing, and that, since that is chartered, by the charter, the province of the HR department, that it was outside the scope of what the City Council could legislate on. But fortunately, we were able to come to an agreement on that with the sponsor, and the amendments clear up those issues.
Awesome, thank, thank you, Elena. So are we prepared to approve it for formal legal sufficiency?
Yes, we would be able to, should these amendments be adopted.
Awesome, thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative and Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We've reviewed the amendments, we have some concerns about the way that this now would separate out the programs to each individual agency and added possible burden, while the Fire Department and Police Department currently have programs that align with this. We would, couldn't be concerned about possible additional needs for staff, however, also other agents, the other agency OEM, does, while they have an internship program, don't necessarily have the explorers for, something similar for younger individuals or a cadet level. So there could be, there'd be additional requirements for that office, which would require additional staffing likely to meet the program requirements. So we would just like some clarity, I guess, on that need and how that would work with the programs. Again, we stand by our initial report around concerns of, of course, staffing and increased costs there, some of the amendments address this in terms of personnel requirements being struck and specific mandates around compensation. But we would just raise again that the agents, a lot of fire and police already have programs that do some of this, and as Chief Shiloh just mentioned, there's the new apprenticeship program, so this work is being done by our agencies, and so just concerns that additional work and additional staffing to add to that. And I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Next up, we've got the Office of Emergency Management. I don't know if we have representation from OEM.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Malidi, Deputy Director from OEM. We do stand behind our report and stand ready to support whatever decision is made, however, we do echo the same concerns that have already been identified. We're a very small shop and operate on a very lean budget, so those are definitely concerns for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we've got the Baltimore City Public School System.
Good afternoon, my name is Kamasi Vines from Baltimore City Public Schools, Director of Career Readiness. We stand by our previously submitted report, and we are looking forward to working with the agencies to bring these opportunities for our students. As Chief Shiloh mentioned, we have the mechanism or the model through the apprenticeship program already in public schools. And we're just looking forward to partnering with the agencies as much as possible to, to make some great things happen for the young folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamasi. And last but not least, we have the Department of Human Resources.
Hi, Joanne Ashton, Chief of HR, Showed Services and Recruitment for Department of Human Resources. We definitely continue to stand by our, our responses, which were definitely around the civil service rules and some of the mandates that Ms. Willie spoke about, and also the number that need to be hired for the programs. We are here in partnership to continue to work with the city agencies and the school system to make this a great program for the students and for the city.
Thank you, Joanne. All right, I will open up the floor to questions from the committee and sponsor, if you have questions of the agency. Councilman Burnett.
So it's not so much a question, per se, but the, I just wanted to respectfully push back on a couple of the items stated. One, starting with the Police Department, and happy to continue the conversation on this, but the bill would require the hiring of 25 students. And while I do understand the concerns with that, I would note that the school system has 80,000 students in it. And so surely, I think, in a pool that large, and noting that the cadets would be in the program for two and a half years prior to that phase, the agencies would all have ample opportunity to assess their character, work performance, the type of people that are coming through these programs, and ample time to vet them before they would be coming into the force itself. And I just find it hard to believe that, you know, in a pool of, a pool that yard large of young people, finding 25 qualified students per year shouldn't be that particularly difficult in that way. Again, happy to have conversations offline about how we can sort of meet halfway on this. But I just would push back that, you know, we've heard time and time again around officer shortages, difficulties in recruitment, and how, you know, staffing challenges at the local level. So, you know, a mandate of 25 young people, I don't think is going to be a rise to the level of what was described in the GTTF report around, you know, a rush to hire young people who would have been familiar with the agency, familiar with the hiring staff, with the department for two and a half years prior to that phase. And so I just wanted, wanted to push back on that notion that, that may be a creative challenge for the agency. And just wanted to also broadly remind folks that, I'm glad to hear that there are existing programs, but none of them are codified, and I think that has been the challenge with this pipeline into public safety careers, is that as the Police Department stated, that, you know, with, when there are protections put in place, things put in place by Commissioner, that's great, but if they aren't codified into the code, then a transition in leadership means that priorities change. And so with this particular program, I've talked to folks in the Fire Department and other agencies that have actually come through these types of programs, and they all have, you know, fond memories of them, but also in every single conversation noted that there were ebbs and flows in the prioritization of this over time. And so without there being a codified pipeline, we are at the whim of whoever's in charge of it, and do they want to prioritize creating pipelines for young people to get in the field of public safety? And so I would just remind folks that that is what the intent is, is not to try and duplicate a program, is to try and make sure that there is Is to try and make sure that there is a sustainable sustaining of this program. This isn't new. We've had a cadet program in each of these agencies minus OEM for significant amount of time, but the quality, the outcomes have been documented. And, you know, I'm glad to see Kamasi on here because I know that this is something that they're trying to work out, even at the school system level. In that because there hasn't been a prioritization in real focused effort over time, these programs aren't really creating actual pathways for young people. Most of them aren't coming out into careers. They come out with certificates that they don't use largely. And so there's an effort at the school system level to fix that and create that pipeline. But I would argue that one of the ways to ensure that we aren't back in where we are right now, where it's well documented that these pipelines aren't producing the outcomes that they should, that codifying it and creating a level of stability for the programs is that important first step in ensuring that regardless of when a young person comes through, that they're getting that same quality, that same level of priority. There is obviously a second bill related to this around funding. It is well that we hope would create that stability in that that long-term pipeline so that the Fire Department, Police Department and OEM are fields that young people are going into. And we look back, you know, years from now, we'll see a force or an increase in a force of, you know, fire and police officers that are from Baltimore, that are from the communities that we all say have been disinvested for so long. And so that that codification is important. Around the concerns about staffing, again, I'm happy to have additional conversations around that. But I would argue that if these agencies minus OEM are already operating programs, adding, happy to add additional, you know, we, the amendments that we included don't require a minimum, we had a minimum amount of staffing required to operating, we're taking that out. So if the staffing is available to run an apprenticeship program already, I'm not sure how this creates an additional burden for folks that are already doing this work. It is just not codified. So just again, respectfully, those are my feedback on that. And it would remind the committee that the staffing minimums are now pulled out. And so it does return the flexibility, or should the committee approve it, would be pulling out the staffing minimums on the agency side. So the concerns around the increased burden, I would, I would argue are, should the committee adopt that amendment, would be lessened.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Burnett. I have a question for finance with regard to exactly that point. For the additional expenses that we are concerned about, was it primarily around those points, those additional positions that were initially mandated? Or is there much more?
So initially, that was our concern. We are, when we got these amendments, just earlier this week, I believe, with a three-day weekend apologies when we got them. But then it became the question of with the staffing having initially been centered in fire and then for the program and then split out to each agency coming up with their own programs and curriculums, thinking about OEM not having these programs already in place and needing to establish that could be on top of any possible additional staff talking with you need to hear from fire and BPD about it, possible additional staff needed if there are changes to their programs that would need to be made to meet the requirements of this bill.
Got it. So the concern is that even if we don't require initially those positions anymore, it leaves OEM without the capacity to actually execute the program?
Without adding staff, yes.
Got it. And then with regard, my second question is with regard to the twenty-five cadet minimum. I know that that's been an issue brought up by both fire and BPD. I was curious, through this program, does this by any way guarantee a cadet, a slot in the BPD or in the Fire Department?
So for, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that was a question.
Oh, okay. So for BPD, cadets have to go through a number of testing requirements just to be a cadet. And then once they finish that program, they have to go through additional testing. So it's not a mandatory pass through. Just because you finished the cadet program, you are now a recruit that goes through the academy. That's really, really important for us.
Got it. Yeah, I'm sensitive to the concern that you guys are bringing up about GTTF and us not being discerning in our hiring. I also do appreciate the councilman's point that, you know, to choose twenty-five out of eighty thousand students. There's a way. I don't know. Maybe it's not as easy as we may think it is. And I'd love your insight on that. But there's definitely twenty-five students in the school system every year that would be interested in getting a foot into the Fire Department or the Police Department. It's a matter of how well we can do at finding those folks. And as far as making sure that we don't lower our standard for folks that eventually do join the force, it sounds like we still have a mechanism to ensure that we get the best of the best, that we get the, you know, high-quality cadets and we can work with them early enough such that they do have a chance to make it through the BPD hiring process. So I'm, I'm really curious. Michelle, you suggested some language. I'm curious how the language looks and how we're thinking about this thus far to make it a little bit more flexible, but also understanding, I think, you know, there's some room here.
Yeah, I think so. I understand everything that you're saying. I understand what the, what the sponsor's saying. The commissioner has a, has a saying that, hold on, I just, I missed it. Quotas equal corruption. We don't want to mandate certain types of things, you know, we don't want to mandate a certain number of people being pulled over. We don't want to mandate a certain number of arrests, you know, this kind of falls in line with that. But what we get from, from this discussion is that we need to have transparency about what this process entails. We have to have an urgency, which certainly BPD has, you know, we have been working so very hard to not only increase cadets, but increase our recruits. We have got to bring in more people. We have to bring in more Baltimoreans. And so what we think is that rather than put a number in the law, what we mandate is that there is either an annual, a quarterly, whatever is appropriate, reporting out to the council about what we have done, you know, figure out what that is. And we are happy to do that. We were already reporting out on a a whole host of other metrics. But this allows the, us to feel that urgency. It mandates us to, to bring you into that process in a more kind of thoughtful way. And so that's kind of the, the language that, that, that I have, have put together.
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that. I think only the sponsor can sort of work through the details of that and, you know, understand if that's sufficient for what he's trying to accomplish here. I do think the key here is sort of, sort of putting some backbone into a program such that it does stand up and it's actually executed. And I think we certainly don't want to go through all this and have a program that only exists on paper because we didn't give it the sort of backbone to exist and to thoughtfully and thoroughly do something. So I'm not sure what that middle ground is. I'm not sure how to make that work. I do appreciate the commissioner's concern and you know, we're not voting on this today. I think that that's a big part of the concern we need to figure out, but I'm really interested in seeing how that goes. With that, I see two hands up. I see Councilwoman Ramos and then Councilman Cohen right after.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilman Burnett, for continuing to make this work because it, I just want to second your notion that we do want to make it work. We want it codified. And there is a pretty robust reporting section in the bill that I think we want to maybe you make more robust so that we get all those metrics. And, you know, I'd be happy to work with you. I did find a typo in one of the amendments in the reporting. Amendment nine, it just says on page and not which page. So I think it's supposed to be page ten. So, but also I think we want to make those reporting requirements a little bit more robust. If you're going to take out some of the mandates, put in the reporting. And so I agree with Director Witsberger on that. And happy to, happy to work with you. But I, I agree with the Councilman Burnett. I think it's important to codify this. We want this going on for a long time. So, and we want that accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all the agencies assembled, to the colleagues. Yeah, you know, having taught in Baltimore City schools, I would definitely concur that there are many, many young people who are interested in careers in public service, be it law enforcement, fire, et cetera. And I think it's incumbent on us to create those pathways, which I think is the intent of this legislation. And, you know, we do local hiring mandates all the time. And we do that in contracts. We do that in bills that we write. And so, you know, I want to first concur with my colleague that I think having it clear and mandated and that this is not just the target, but this is what we are going to do is critically important. And I guess it would also, like, I'm trying to understand, I completely get that quotas in the Police Department have become extremely problematic in a lot of ways in the past with writing tickets or making arrests. But I am trying to understand the connection with the Gun Trace Task Force because I can't, I cannot get the leap. Like, we're saying we want to hire, we want to create this pipeline, we want to create these opportunities for our young people in Baltimore. Like, what's to make us think they'd be any more likely to turn corrupt than anybody else?
My apologies. I probably didn't explain it properly. So so in the, the report that was released last week, there was a great deal of discussion about how we have got to make sure that our hiring standards are the same regardless of what the pressure is to hire. So it's not necessarily that we're going to hire the kids and they're going to turn bad. It's that we may feel pressured to hire people more quickly and may have to hire people who shouldn't be hired because we may not have additional, you know, the right number of qualified candidates. And what they've come to believe is that many of the officers who were a part of the GTTF should never have been hired to begin with, frankly. But that perhaps there was this pressure to get folks on the force, get bodies. You know, and so they cut corners. And so that, that, that was the, the point of it.
Got it. Yeah. No, I totally understand that. Do not want us hiring folks who are gonna end up endangering the lives of citizens in the city. However, I just still fail to make the connection. I understand we don't want or the department doesn't want any increased pressure to have to make decisions quickly or, you know, limit their pool. But I just fundamentally think one of our values needs to be hiring from within our city and particularly within our school system and creating those pipelines. And so, you know, I think it's really important to just stand on that principle. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Burnett.
So two things. One, I wanted to, I was sent a reminder from staff that to clarify that the OEM reference in this bill isn't to establish a full-on cadet-like program. It would be a eight-to-ten-week internship program. And so just wanted to flag when we talk about staff capacity, I'm not, not saying that running an internship program doesn't require additional capacity, but wanted to flag that, that, that particular pathway in the bill, which can be referenced on page three, isn't as robust of a pipe, pipeline and program as what's being asked of fire and police. And I would just second Councilmember Cohen's comments in that I would, I obviously understand there being a push away from, you know, having hiring people who are unqualified. I would note that the young people coming out of this program would probably be more qualified than your average applicant, having spent two and a half years in a, a pipeline program that would be, you know, have its own level of metrics, testing, et cetera. And so I think if we're talking about having high-quality folks into the force, this is probably the way to do it. In that these folks, these, these young people, we're reaching them at a young age. We're giving them a path forward. I know I wish in high school, early in my high school career, I had a path forward or something that I could focus on. And I would note that I did go to enroll in a a, a, a physical therapy training program. And it really did help me focus on a career path forward. It gave me that, and obviously not a physical therapist. But it gave me a, a path, it opened opportunities for me to get internships. I worked at Towson University, got into University of Maryland, got internships immediately there. And I had a resume that I could build on. And so would argue that while I think that there are tremendous amount of lessons to be learned from the Gun Trace Task Force, that I think that this is actually stepping in the opposite direction and saying that we are actually reaching further into the pool of people who are coming from Baltimore City, live in Baltimore City, invested in Baltimore City and investing in a career in public safety and know what they want to do. And we're getting them early into that. So we just, just lift that up that, you know, I do understand mandates and will, again, to the committee, could, you know, fully commit to continuing conversations with the Police Department on this. So, but just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee on this bill? Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, you know, I wanted this to come across the wrong way, but I want to point out that like, while I understand and appreciate the intent here, when you're running something as large as Police Department, and it's a lot easier said than done, that, hey, we're gonna write a quota of X number of positions that need to be hired. I think we all have the same shared goals here to promote safer communities in Baltimore City. And we all want to see opportunities created for our young people, especially first and primarily those who live in Baltimore City. Help give them opportunities, especially pathways to contribute and give back and serve our communities. But I do want to point out that like this concept of a quota remains a deep concern to me. And I want to make sure that, you know, we are not hampering the department's ability to hire the right people in order to, one, ensure that we have safe communities. And two, just as importantly, to ensure that we have compliance with the consent decree. It's just my two cents. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments, questions otherwise from the committee? All right, we are going to put this bill in a recess. There's still some work we need to do. And Councilman Burnett, look forward to working with you on those two final pieces.